Six thirty, I'm gonna call this study session of the Littleton City Council to order. It's March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. The council is present except for council member Valdez and Mary Pro Temporoid. Uh, we got three items on the agenda tonight. First up, we have a discussion on the unified land use code updates pending the next few months here. Then we'll talk about capital improvement financing strategy. And then finally, some discussion for direction for the Next Generation Advisory Committee. So first up, we've got land use code updates discussion. Turn it over to Jim to...
Director Mayor, members of council. The previous city council direction and our work plans for the year all reflect that we have planned for this year kind of the next iteration of refinements to the land use code as we call it, U L U C. Since we've been at it for a year or more now, I'm trying to call it just the land use code. Not as much a new thing. So tonight, since that is, that does take quite a bit of work and will be a major focus for our community development staff for this year. We wanted to come to you with kind of a suggested outline or plan for those items that we might focus on for this year's U I U C updates. And then take your, your direction on whether this look, list looks about right. Or if there are things that you have been thinking about that we should also be talking about. And I think council can think about that together and then give some collective direction on anything else or anything to take off the list. I'll say that, you know, in preparing the item, staff thought pretty broadly about council's priorities, the things that we've heard about over the past year, topics that have come up. Hopefully, many of those will look, will look familiar to you. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Jennifer Henry, to give a little more than overview.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So I am here before you. As you will remember, we did adopt our vision in twenty eighteen, which kind of started this whole process. Then we did our comprehensive plan adoption. And it's hard to believe we're gonna be coming up on five years before we know it. So that'll be a discussion in the future here very soon. And then in twenty twenty-one, we adopted the zoning and subdivision codes and kind of put, put them all together in the Unified Land Use Code. And we on staff are also referring it now as the Land Use Code. So in twenty twenty-two, we made a commitment to you all that this is truly a living document. And as the world changes and as Littleton grows up, continues to grow up, that we will look at this document on an annual basis. So we first did that in twenty twenty-two and had a slate of modifications that we took through a very robust study session process, both with City Council and Planning Commission. We plan on doing the same this year. So this is the second annual slate of land use code modifications and improvements. We have now two years under, or about, almost two years under the utilizing the Unified Land Use Code. And for the most part, it is doing exactly what we wanted it to do. We are bringing housing units online. We are having more administrative approvals of items and review. We're having great neighborhood meetings to get the word out. Trying new methods of how to get the word out about projects that are coming. So we'll kind of have a further discussion on that. So there are a lot of different things that we would like to address. And we've kind of narrowed them down to these six major themes, if you will. The first being adaptive reuse. And this is really talking about some of our historical buildings or buildings that have in the past been used for one use. But we're getting requests to use it for another use. So office buildings being asked to be turned into commercial spaces. And that has implications on parking, has implications on building code. So just really, we do have a section associated with that, but it just needs some refinements. So there's some consistencies in trying to apply it. We have, have discovered some challenges, so really just wanting to clean that up. The next one, next two really have to do with housing, which is a hot topic on all levels, state and local at this point. So the first is cottage court communities. We brought one modification to you on that last year in terms of which zone districts they could be allowed. And in doing that, we discovered that we had a challenge with actually the densities that were permitted for cottage court communities. So really, what we'd like to do is take a look at those densities. Right now, they're at a five units per acre and a six units per acre. So five if they're in single, single family residential SLR. And then if they're in MFR, it goes to six. So those are inconsistent with densities associated with cottage court communities. So if you actually look at the graphic that is on here, that is a two-acre site and has twenty-four units on it. So that's a density of twelve acre, uh, twelve dwelling units per acre.
How big of units would those be?
So that is one of the other things that we're looking at is do we need to adopt a maximum size for a cottage residential unit on this? We actually do have an application in that kind of, I would say, mixed some ideas on that. So right now, there is only a minimum lot size and that minimum lot size is one thousand if there is an actual lot size. In the case like this, it's not, um, there are not individual lots. This is, this would be one lot.
You were asking the size of the actual structure, not the lot.
Actual structure, yeah.
The actual structure right now, we do not have a minimum or maximum. But that is one of the things that we will look at during these modifications is do we need to have a maximum?
Could you go two or three stories, you know? Because they're obviously gonna have a small footprint and maybe you have to go up or down.
Correct, correct. So really taking a look at what works in which zone district.
Right.
So Jennifer, bring in the IHO as well, because that could apply.
Absolutely.
So the old, the old code was that limiting the ability for more affordable units?
Do you mean the current?
I mean, the, the current, the current, sorry.
The, the, the density is severely limited.
Okay, okay. So you're asking to change it to make it more dense?
Correct.
So that we can get those affordable units in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Cottage courts were transitional for the, you know, like between maybe commercial or multifamily two.
Or single family.
Single family. So, and I, and I understand that there was some challenges there where there's growth and then the...
Right.
Yeah. So is that being part of the update too?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to connect it with other conversations happening right now, cottage court communities are a really solid part of that whole missing middle housing.
Correct.
That could be a solution here. So that's why...
As are ADUs.
This and the next one are so high on the list.
And, and so how, they're not individual lots, it's considered one lot.
They can be individual lots.
For financing purposes, they would have to be. An investor wouldn't come in and say, I'll just finance the whole thing. I guess maybe the builder might do something like that, but I think we gotta be cautious of the financing on something like that. Not, not us, the city, but us, the citizens.
More akin to a condo.
I'm sorry?
Be probably more akin to a condo.
Yeah, but they're detached, so, I don't know, just something to think about.
Do you want to comment how does financing play into feasibility?
Yeah, you know, I'm just thinking from my world, we wouldn't finance one of those homes.
Okay.
Not the way you're currently explaining it. They would all have to be titled individually.
Did he answer?
Can I add something about, or?
Yeah, they're, they're, the transition.
Yeah.
On the edges. And it's, it's staying that way and clarifying with the transition.
Yeah, I love the concept. I just wanna make, yeah, I just wanna make sure, you know, the developer's thinking that way or thinking that way saying, okay, how are we gonna, who's gonna find, finance these individual units?
Can you make an example of a cottage community that's maybe we might be aware of or?
Didn't Snow White live in one?
Not offhand, but I absolutely can get you something.
I mean, by our city code, the definition just is a cluster of homes around a central open space. So, I mean, my community fits that definition.
That's true. Aren't yours attached?
Uh, some are.
Yeah, some are.
Well, I don't think it's a requirement that they have to be attached. I'm sure you could do it with...
They are attached.
Correct.
Yeah.
Some are more attached than others.
Next, also housing related is accessory dwelling units. We have not gotten a lot of takers. There still is an affordability component there. So there are some things that we can adjust in that in terms of where they're located, as well as some of the requirements in terms of setbacks and what they have to meet in terms of impact fees. So those are all things that we're looking at to, you know, can, can we encourage these more? Can you just remind all of us where those ADUs are located? So right now, the ADUs are only located if they're along an alley. You have to have an alley in order for ADUs.
It's very limited here in the city of Littleton.
Correct, correct.
I assume there'll be conversations had with ramifications on Oklahoma House Bill or Senate Bill two thirteen.
Very much so. Littleton is a tier one community. ADUs is a big focus. If you have any questions, Kathleen can answer that on the housing bill. I'm just looking through it. I'm sure she's ready to go.
We'll know by July if it passes or not and how the bill has changed. But is there any, I mean, to start getting ahead of it and let's go with the assumption it's gonna pass and allow ADUs throughout the city.
I would be in favor of allowing it as a use by right regardless of zone size or, or house size or attachment or accessibility to an alley.
Again, I think it needs to come up for conversation. I mean, can we start talking about parking?
Well, if House Bill two thirteen passes, it doesn't matter.
It's not gonna matter.
Well, we're home rule.
No, it's not gonna matter. That's the preemption of the home rule. It's basically saying you're required to allow use by rights.
I would like to at least bring it up for conversation. I know this is something that previous council debated on, but I think it's well worth having the conversation regardless of the outcome.
Right. Well, I mean, I agree with you regardless of the outcome.
Well, it was, remember the rationale was that we were gonna tiptoe into ADUs. And this is something the Grand Junction did, allowing them with this caveat to be looked at later again. My question is, what about utilities? I mean, I, I don't know how it works, but you get so much, you know, you have sewer lines and all this stuff. How do you make sure that an ADU can be accommodated on a property of a...
Right now, it is my understanding, this has actually been, I would say, one of the barriers to actually getting ADUs is right now Denver Water requires a separate tap.
Yeah.
Um, to the tune of twenty thousand dollars.
That's one of the conversations.
It's just cost prohibitive.
Well, if you, if you don't require a new tap, then you can just tie into the existing homes line. That helps with the cost.
Can you do that first?
Right now, no.
Right now, no.
Right. Do you think that will change as part of the bill?
I don't know. I don't even think it's part of the bill.
I mean, in the conversations...
Tell me with the rulemaking with Dolo.
Yeah, the conversations that we've had with Aravo County and kind of...
What, what is he, Metro Mayor?
How, how do we show to state that we're already doing so many things? That is, as planning directors and the conversation I had with local planning directors, we, we talked about the, the impact fees and utilities that the utility agencies were a huge cost barrier and a regular short-term barrier.
So that wasn't a requirement of the city to town?
Correct. What the city has done is we, if you are doing the accessory dwelling unit, we only charge you half of the impact fees. Because we, it, it is a whole new unit. So we could conceivably say you have to pay all the impact fees associated with that, at, at least when it comes to the tap fees, we charge you half.
Have we had any applications for ADUs since we...
We, we have a few, most of them over an existing detached garage have been our big ones. I think there are several, uh, I don't know about them, ADUs kind of thing. They did not go through the proper channels, but they, they're out there.
Is that allowed under the STR rules as a owner occupied?
Short-term rental.
Yeah.
Yep. Will that be addressed too in this bill coming up in July at all?
Short-term rentals? I don't think short-term rentals is part of it.
Not that I'm, not that I saw.
Short-term rentals are the rule.
I mean, I'm sure Dolo could make that part of the rulemaking process, but I don't know. It's not in the bill.
And that's part of the reason why...
I think it's addressed for rural communities, but not tier one. Don't quote me on that, but I'm thinking my initial... So, um, any other questions on accessory dwelling units? So I heard kind of used by right, concern for parking. And then just overview real quick on cottage court, the size question, where can it be located? Stay as transition, a transition land use? How does financing play into the feasibility of, of them being on one large lot? I'm gonna get you an example of a cottage court community and what about attached products?
And remind all of us, me in particular, cottage courts are allowed in each zoned areas?
Multifamily, multifamily, SLR, small lot residential.
Small lot, not medium?
But aren't they just allowed on the, as transition?
They have to be adjacent to a multifamily or commercial land use or major road.
Okay.
All right. So short-term rental rentals are mentioned in relation to accessory dwelling units? And that regulation would be left in the municipality. So there's a way.
Yes.
So, so there is some, there's some home rule on that one. Okay.
Thanks, Kathleen.
All right. Our next one, temporary signs. So really, this, this stems and will focus on yard signs. What we discovered very recently is that we do not specifically have any regulations associated with yard signs. We do not define yard signs in the U L U C right now in the land use code. And we have a lack of size requirements and some discrepancies in size requirements. And right now, the interpretation would have us permitting all yard signs.
We don't want that.
So, correct.
Instead of, I think, it's not that we don't have any regulations that can apply, we don't have a category.
Correct.
For yard size, we have, you know, so as they are now, they are a, one type of temporary signs. And we think we should probably have a, have a little more customized approach to, to yard signs and probably clarify anything else with temporary signs. So that would be the focus there.
Right.
Also, size came up as an issue, you know, we think of the ones in our yard as opposed to banners.
Correct.
So you're gonna address that, right?
Because the interpretation we made of the yard sign is similar to a post sign. That then put you in the need a permit temporary sign. Then there were also size restrictions. So we will get that all cleaned up. We also have some other inconsistencies we found in our sign code as it is right now that we will clean up.
About right away, is that gonna stay the same?
That has always been the case and will continue to be the case.
Such a fun, robust conversation on sign code a few years ago.
It was.
No further conversation.
Excellent. So any, any other things that you all have seen in terms of, of our sign code in general, not just even temporary signs?
I just think it needs to, we need to make our citizens aware of what... It, it's nice to know how to stay legal.
Yes, yes. The next one that has to do with major and minor plan amendments. So this is in chapter nine, our administration code. The way it reads right now, it's, it, there's a lot of discrepancies between what's major and what's minor. So just really cleaning that up. So it's very clear, here's what's major or here's what constitutes minor. Anything else falls under major. So that's the major and minor plan amendment.
Uh, before you go on, what kinds of things might move from major to minor? I mean, can you give us some examples?
So we have a landscape issue that I, I wanna say like, it says twenty-five percent, you can get a twenty-five percent administrative adjustment for, that would fall under minor. But then if you look at what it says at major, it has a ten percent threshold. So those sort of discrepancies and cleaning it up. We've also had this come up in regards to some existing older plan developments that we have and what would push it from minor to major. So just getting consistency there. And the last one that we're recommending is a continuation of the discussions that we've been having with Planning Commission in relation to master development plan review criteria. Kind of, we, we had twelve to begin with, then we went to three. And really, we're planning commissions leaning, we might need a couple more. So we're really working with them and staff has some, some ideas for that. But as we have seen, I believe we've gone through now three master development plans. We really have honed that and on, on where the comfort level lays with that for planning commission.
Three would those be? Would that be Evergreen? Toll Brothers?
We had Evergreen, Toll Brothers has not done an MDP.
Okay.
Evergreen, we did do Columbine Square. That's actually gonna come back.
Right.
And then the Norgram Property, which is called Powers Place. So, and we do have a few more that we anticipate in April, May.
Are you looking at essentially the, still keeping the two types of master development plans? You are still looking at keeping both of them? Have you considered consolidating that and simplifying it to down it to a single master development plan? And then just having site development plans be that next step kind of ubiquitously? Or do you find that this, the way it is right now is, is working? Cause I don't, I, just from an optics perspective, it's kind of hard to tell what would constitute one being detailed versus conceptual. I don't know, is, are, are developers, do they have anything to say about that? Is there a way we can simplify that at all?
So we have not yet had a detailed MDP.
Okay.
We do have one that I believe is going to be a detail. So I think, you know, it'll be interesting to see. I will say the Powers Place one that we did is, was very close to being detailed. Construction drawings. You know?
Can you let us know when, I was gonna say?
Just one other comment, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, having a detailed option, you know, there is some benefit for the applicant if they would like to consolidate effectively their site plan and their MDP from a timing standpoint. If, if you're willing to make the investment and meet all the requirements for the site plan as, as part of your MDP step that's required, then you can get, you can get your site plan as part of that.
And, and that's kind of why I was asking as to where these things were falling into broadly categorized and how that's gone with the detailed process. Because I know also on the flip side of that, the conceptual sign plan actually is the, the key to the dance, right? Like you either have something or you don't, and you don't need much more detail than that, like at that stage. And I know they have, kind of both have their utility. I'm just wondering, is like, is that clear to the developers you're talking to that they're falling into kind of one pathway or another? Or, or is it just like they're coming to you with a plan and you're like, oh, that seems like it's a detailed one? Or, eh, that's more conceptual in nature?
Somewhat telling that they've all been conceptual and that seems to be the logical step, but to, you know, just to give that option. If there was a matrix and say, if you go on this path, this is what you get. If you go on this path, these are the, the benefits. There's nothing to say that you can't be more detailed than required in anything.
Correct.
Which is what we saw with Powers Place. I think a lot of it depends on, on honestly, the investment level and the confidence level.
Councilmember, I think to your point, a part of the crux of this policy discussion around, around the conceptual MDP will be aligning the criteria, for instance, with council's intent for the MDP, you know, step of the process to make sure that, you know, it, whatever the purpose of, of the MDP is, you know, clarifying that. And then, then making sure that we're not required... Um, and then, then, uh, making sure that we're not requiring, you know, more or less than that. Cause that's been where I've heard some of the, the question.
And then the fact that we, are we potentially adding on qualification criteria to the conceptual sign? That, that is what's being proposed, right?
It would most likely fall to both.
Oh, it most likely fall to both?
I mean, cause there, there's standards that a conceptual application has to meet.
Correct.
And there's standards that a detail has to meet. The review criteria is the same for both.
So you're thinking about splitting them and making different review criteria or leaving it the same?
I think the review criteria is what we're really, the decision criteria is what we're talking about.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
Not the standards. Sorry if I didn't make that clear.
So to Kyle's point, his recommendation's already been the way it is. It's just the review criteria, adding the additional criteria from the.
The three.
Three to whatever number the planning commission recommends. Then will those be used for both conceptual and detailed or will they be two separate?
My understanding right now is it would be, it would be for both.
Okay.
So.
Never mind, and I'll backtrack off of that. That sounds like a great idea. Sorry, I just didn't want the conceptual becoming too much of a detailed process to the point of indistinguishable between both. That was my, over my concern.
This is really has to do with the review criteria.
Okay.
So why wouldn't you do a conceptual? Cause it wouldn't cost you as much for your.
It'd be faster to have the site plan all, all lined up once a day. You don't have to go through the process again. It would be a longer process.
So, so a MDP could be the site plan. Detailed. Is your site plan too?
Yes, yes, correct.
So you completely skip that step. So like your Evergreen, um, and Aspen Grove, they're now in, pre-planning for their site plans. So they're going through that process.
You can see the, the timeline of how that's taking that much longer.
The advantage is the timeline.
Yeah.
Correct.
Disadvantage is there's a lot more work upfront without.
Right, without that guarantee. It's a more of a risk, yes. Yeah.
Excellent. Um, and then we'll also be doing cleanups to our land use matrix. We've found some, I mean, besides the typos, which we consider scrivener's error, then we take care of those. But, you know, density matchups. Um, we've also had some different interpretations of actual, like, it states one land use. Okay, does that mean this or the other thing? So really clarifying that, tightening it up a little bit more. And then also some zoning map changes. So, you know, if you see any inconsistencies between our future land use map and zoning map or what's actually on the ground, those are the things that we would want to know about. Um, and then just other minor changes.
I had one that was brought to me by a citizen, and that was, uh, Hudson Gardens. And that may, um, have implications for other places that are deed restricted. And I know we don't know everything, but that's deed restricted. Again, we don't know how much of that, but that's zone CM. And it would be nice to see if we could protect that just a little bit more with a different zone. And I, I don't know how many other parks or places in the city that may be the case. Or I probably don't have any open space left, but if there's any open space or whatever.
Think, correct me if I'm wrong, the future land use map shows it as park?
So that's another example of where we might just bring this together, reconcile the future land use map and zone.
Yeah, Hudson Gardens had an overlay, I looked at it, but I, it, it wasn't clear. It was still, it, it still was looking like CM. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
And I don't know if there's other ones, and I, I have this vision of this huge spreadsheet, you're collecting all this information. So there may be other things in there like that, and I don't know if it qualifies as a whole topic, but something.
Yeah, um, one that has been brought to our attention, and I'm not sure what, um, what it will look like, but is Littleton Cemetery. Um, so for their.
Yeah.
What's this development we have? Sorry.
Yeah, but there might be other places like that, now that we're looking at things a little over.
They also own a piece of vacant property that has nobody currently inhabited.
No one residing in it?
Nobody residing in it.
No permanent residents.
No permanent residents.
It's kind of an epistological question there.
Yes, yes. So, um, so.
Listen, before you move on, just other minor changes, let's, the number of chickens.
Number of chickens? How many chickens do you have now, Kyle?
I have five, and six is the limit.
Yeah.
I kept pushing for.
A lot of infrastructure, we make sure the chickens can cross the road.
That's all, it's all in there.
I would love a chicken, I'm for HOA.
For sure, I know quite a few people that have.
Most people have more than that. That's the thing, we're not enforcing it.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's not, it's interesting.
So.
I live in H O A.
Well, I don't.
Some, uh, some other items that were on our list. It, it, it really is, is a time issue and a resource issue for us at the, at this point. But kind of revisiting that neighborhood convenience, um, if you'll remember. Actually, you, you brought up in council wanting to go to the convenience store in your robe.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so that.
My, my statement still stands.
Yes, so, so relooking at that, um, also Midmont Mile. One of the, um, items that we may bring in, if you'll remember, of Midmont Mile. Right now we have kind of an outline in the future land use map of what that could potentially be.
That Littleton Boulevard.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, um, but we, we really would like to tie that with more of us, the citywide historic preservation plan. So hoping by the end of this year that we'll be applying for a grant for that. So, um, one of the things that has, has possibly been recommended, um, to get a toll hold is really looking at that ninety day hold for the demolition permits. So that might be something that Historic Preservation Board discusses. Um, food trucks, so this would be a conversation with economic development is something, gosh, I think, right when I started, we, we talked about how do we wanna handle food trucks and.
Is it for when they're like a permanent food provider for establishment versus making it to a park?
Um, honestly, both. So how do we wanna handle them? Do we wanna handle them? So, future topic.
Back to the Midmont Mile and the, because of HPB and the ninety day demolition. Remember when we had a list where if there was, somebody had a, a permit, then they were, it, it was kind of a hold, which made people angry. And then Andrea or somebody would go talk to them about the fact that their building was historic. Often that's too late, and that's why we ended up getting rid of it. I'm, ninety days may not be too late, but I think it's an awareness thing that, that you have an historic building, you're in a historic district, you're a historic area, and we think people know, but they don't often. So I, I'd like to see maybe something a little proactive in that with those key areas like the Midmodel, uh, Mile. I think the, you know, the districts know, you know, Rappel Hills and Loughlin and that stuff. They, they pretty much know, but I think the Littleton.
How does HPB have any jurisdiction over Littleton Boulevard or any other neighborhood other than what's considered in the historic, uh?
They don't have any jurisdiction.
Okay.
They're just downtown.
Yes.
And, and historic designated projects outside downtown. But they, they moved towards advocacy and education.
Okay.
And for example, there was somebody on Littleton Boulevard that was thinking of renovations. And, um, the, then a staff person went out and explained to them that, where they were. And then they made the renovation so that it kept the historic nature of the building. Uh, they were just unaware.
Correct.
And they actually got a funding.
Think, um.
I mean, they could be aware, right? But they can say, okay, I understand.
They can be aware, but awareness is half of it. And, and this, in this case, the person went with, um, you know, changes A instead of B. Because A was better from the start.
Right.
It's gonna admit that Littleton Boulevard's gonna start popping. Yeah, I mean with, um, Littleton Brewery and Jerry Cricket. So, uh, one of the things that I've actually thought of, so we did, um, HPB, um, adopted that legacy list. So one of the things that we can do in the background is actually tie those addresses and put kind of a, a pop-up that comes. So if anyone applies for anything, um, it, it gives a message to the permit tax or the owner that, hey, this is a historic property.
And, and that's great. My point is that it's often too late at that point. That's some awareness, and it doesn't, it's not the whole city. It's just certain areas, and I, I think the Mid Mile's the perfect place. And I know with the survey, um, there is some awareness, but there probably could be more.
Are you saying like proactively send some kind of communication to all of those properties?
And just so they know, um, what they've got. And it may not change things because it's not really protected at this point, but.
Well, most of it's not historic.
Right.
You're not talking about the houses, you're just talking about the businesses, right, on the construction of downtown?
Most of the stuff on the Midland Mile is, is business that would, would constitute historical, yes.
Mostly talking to the.
Because it's over fifty years old.
You're talking about the, um, survey that, uh, what you call it, did the, the commercial.
Yes, yes, we had a Mid, Midland Mile commercials and, um, study. But again, I, I mean, to our best ability, we would like to tie that all to a citywide historic preservation plan and recommendations coming out of that. So, we will have a more robust conversation. I informed the study session at a later date on, on that.
And there's funds for that, I mean, there's one.
Uh, yes, yeah, so, you know, it's, right now, resources to basically put it together. Staff resources to put it, put the grant application together, um, to apply for that, um, for the next round.
Oh, for, uh, to get this, uh?
To get a grant to pay for and do the city historic preservation plan.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Joan, do you have anything to add on that?
None on that topic.
Okay, okay. Um, and last one here, uh, as a future topic area is public notice, um, in neighborhood meetings. Just having a year and a half of those under a belt, um, you know, you may wanna look at, are we doing everything that we can to, to notify the public in the best manner possible? So, that again is more robust conversation.
Joan, to clarify, we're recommending that we move forward with the items that you talked through here.
Correct.
And those that we just talked about.
Um, the future topic areas, I, I think it's gonna be as time permits.
So that's, that's what I wanna just clarify. At, at this point tonight, our recommendation is based on our capacity and what we understand priorities to be. This would be the focus for this summer's process.
Correct.
Um, but we wanted to let you know that the other items are on our radar. I think one, one example, when we talk about the Midmont Mile, um, is also that that should probably be closely, closely linked to the, uh, the economic development strategy that's in the works for this year that will no doubt, you know, highlight, um, our resources there. So, um, I think that is the kind of thing that we'll build on the, the economic study. So, yeah, those would be future topics.
Sounds good.
Thank you. So quickly to wrap up here. Still October night. Yes, okay, um, uh, in April, um, so here in the next few weeks, um, by the end of April at the latest, we are actually going to put out our proposed red lines on ENCODE. So they will be public facing and will be encouraging the public, um, including city council and planning commission to, um, comment online, um, on those. If you remember in the study sessions, we brought a lot of PowerPoints with, with, with red lines on them. So we're, we will be referring to ENCODE in those presentations.
Question. That's brutal to go into there and try to figure things out. I mean, I, I know we need to do that. Is there a way to like summarize, like you did in these categories?
Yes, so, so the site itself, I understand that the site itself for these changes, it will be a specific site. And it will only have the red lines in it, so you don't have to.
You don't look through the whole code?
Correct.
And Jenny and I also talked about the need, you know, I think ENCODE's a great tool for us. A lot of people can access it and use it. But we also know that, you know, a few of, of those items on in the list may also warrant some other public discussions and.
Hundred percent.
Forums where folks can come out and learn and talk to us about the proposed changes.
Yeah, um, and as you said, I mean, so May will come back to you, kind of let you know it's out there. Here's what we're hearing, um, and you'll actually get to see the, the red lines, we'll walk through them. Um, June, closing the, the public comment period and bring it to planning commission study session. Um, I have a feeling we'll probably have a study session in May with planning commission as the stuff is, is out there. Um, and then our, our hope is that we're adopting in October, um, this slate of modifications. If this state legislature passes this new housing policy plan, when would that go into effect?
Twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six, okay.
So, yeah, DOL would have until twenty twenty four to make rules, regulations, and then cities have until twenty twenty six.
Okay.
And then what happens? Then we take our code and have to update it?
Yep. Or, or it is updated for us, if we don't.
Yeah, it's safe.
We'll just link to state law.
There are a lot of things that are recommended in that housing bill that Littleton has already been proactive on. So it will be as painful, you know, not painful, but. TBD, I haven't read it word for word yet, I'm gonna fully admit that.
So the rules go into effect if this passes twenty twenty four?
December twenty twenty four.
And then twenty twenty six, you have to be in compliance or something?
So. Stay tuned.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Additions, suggestions, subtractions?
No.
Wait, what is it? What, that word you used, what is it?
So, that's not this year.
I know.
Maybe.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, um, to capital improvement, financing strategy discussion. Yes, Burke's and Finance Brain Trust are coming up here. And if, you know, if they finish, you know, early, you know, sunset's in seven minutes and we get the planetary conjunction, you go out there tonight for a half hour. If it's not cloudy, I didn't see what it looked like out there.
It'll be done in seven.
Seven minutes? Do you know who you're presenting with?
I can tap dance while they set up.
Answer is buy now. Now? As in before interest rates go up next?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
So, uh, we were last with you on this, this concept specifically within our, our capital planning. Specifically regarding, uh, potential financing for some of our larger projects back in late October. And at that time, we, we, you know, gave some basic background on how, how debt could work and how we might approach that and, and council gave direction to keep learning about it. Explore more specifics, bring back some, some specific projects and talk about how we might do this. So we've been doing that, that research. I know, um, Keith's team has, has continued, our public works team, as you said, um, has been working to, um, you know, further kind of think of how these, timing for these projects, how things can work. Uh, the finance, uh, our finance director Tiffany has been working with, um, a third party financial advisor who, um, you know, works in this debt financing world to kind of think about, think with us about, um, all the different considerations that might go into a, a debt financing. Um, so we wanna follow up with you tonight about kind of what the current, uh, conditions are. And I think, um, talk about the, some of the uncertainties that we face and how we might best proceed to be prudent with that, that strategy and keep projects moving forward at this point. So that'll turn it over to Tiffany and Keith.
Um, good evening, council. Uh, we're gonna talk about the capital improvement strategy. Um, so we kinda, we came to council back in October and talked about different debt financing mechanisms. And, you know, we're really leaning towards COPs. They are fairly quick in the market, they are easy, um, to get through. It only takes an action of council, and so that definitely is the area that we're gonna be looking at. So I did just wanna kind of highlight, again, some of our existing debt that we currently have. And just remind you, we have very little debt here in Littleton. Uh, we have a couple of COPs that are open and we have some sewer revenue loans and a lease or one, one COP. Our museum was actually paid off in November of twenty twenty two. And so that one is free and clear, but we still have the courthouse that's paid off in twenty twenty four. and so that one is free and clear, but we still have the courthouse that's paid off in twenty twenty four, small equipment lease twenty twenty four, and again, the sewer revenue loans. Um, so we have relatively low debt, which is good for us, because that means we have uh less liabilities than a lot of other cities uh might have when it comes to issuing debt. COPs, we've talked about that, it's a lease purchase agreement, you pledge the asset that you're building or you pledge an asset that you currently have against a build, an asset that you're building. Um, their rent payments, it's subject to annual appropriation. Um, we could lose the property if we don't appropriate the fund, so there is risk to those who are purchasing it and risk to the city of losing uh that property. And um again, no election is required for that, council has the ability to approve that and and have us enter into that lease agreement. I said it's one of the quickest ways that we can do it, it's about forty five to sixty days, this is an example we presented in January related to what it might look like, thirty million dollars worth of funding. Um, we have to pay a premium because it's uh worth more than your issuing true into interest cost at that time was four point eight four, which has gone up a little bit recently, um, with some of the market changes. Um, and you know, market timing is important, you want to make sure that you have a buyer available, they're interested in purchasing your COPs, but again, it's the quickest method that you can begin to happen. Debt service would be about one point nine million on a thirty year note. Where we are today, um, so yes, one of the biggest concerns, risks that we have right now is market. No one knows what the market's gonna look like, one day it can be up eight basis points, then in a week later, it's gonna be down eight basis points. Um, there's a lot going on in the the uh banking world right now, you've seen some banks that have failed recently, that FDIC has kicked in and um is is helping them through that process, so that really is the biggest risk. Um, the longer we wait, the potential that the risks are gonna be, or the interest rates are gonna be higher. But there's also a risk in making sure that we expend those funds within the time period that it's allowed by the IRS to ensure that it's taxed up to those who are purchasing it, and so that is one of our main points right now that we want to just kind of talk through is the timing of some of these larger projects that we have on the docket and that we want to move forward with. Um, the biggest thing, they have to be spent within three years, so the moment that you close on that deal and get those funds, you have three years to expend those funds. Projects take a lot of time to get through, you have to design them, you have to spec them, you have to construct them, you have to get vendors. And so a couple of the projects that we have are very large and are very involved, and so that's what we uh really want to talk about today. I keep pushing you.
First, clicker that you can.
Exactly, here, next time you shoot the laser.
I know.
Right in your eye.
Yeah. And.
Go ahead.
And so Keith is just gonna talk about some of the potential projects that we have, we've we've talked a little bit about these in the past, but um, we've made a little progress on some of those, so um Keith's gonna share that and.
Tiffany, the courthouse, you, that wasn't paid off in three years?
It was not, no, 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 no.
No, no, the money was spent.
The money, so when you issue debt COPs, you get proceeds from your uh the investors, you have three years to sell those proceeds or to spend those proceeds. So that's the three year limitation, so once we were to issue COPs, we're gonna get thirty million dollars in cash or it's gonna be in a bank account for us to access. We have three years to spend that money down to zero to ensure that it remains tax, non taxable in the eyes of the IRS and we're meeting all the qualifications.
They don't want the pocket thirty million and invest it as the interest rates go up and then.
Yeah, there's arbitrage or arbitrage that you have to calculate, we do that internally every five years on our current COPs to ensure that that is not happening, um, so we do have some regulations that we have to follow.
So it's not the payoff, it's how you.
Correct, correct.
The proceeds.
Winging on that question, what is, like, what are the ramifications of missing a window by six months, like, I mean, obviously, construction right now is a volatile industry in and of itself too, so. Like, if a contractor doesn't come through, does the liability and the risk trickle down in terms of fees or penalties, or is this something that we're ultimately saddled with and hurting our credit?
It's ultimately our responsibility, that's why we do the arbitrage calculations to ensure that we're spending it timely, that we're not in earning more interest than we're paying, um, so we're not making money off the deal. Um, so it's truly on us, and those are things that we have to consider when we're doing projects, and some projects may not take us long, and so you can do design and construction and have it completed within that window. Some of them you can't, and so that's why we have um kind of a strategy that we want to kind of share with you on how we're gonna make sure, because materials aren't available, construction times are longer, and so we just want to make sure that we're able to construct that and get it completed within that time.
I'm sorry, let me re-ask the question, what happens if we if we do not make it to that window, like, in, within that three year window, say, a project is outstanding?
Yeah, so there's a a couple of risks, I believe, and uh, one of them is we would do a calculation and we would be assessed penalties potentially by the IRS, because we did not fall. Um, there could be an instance where maybe the bonds are no longer tax exempt, uh, depending on who purchased them or if that's the reason they did. Um, and I'm sure there's a number of other reasons that I can't think of right now.
See, your whole COP issue is at risk because of the commitments made to the investors, it's not just the project that didn't quite make it.
Right.
It affects your whole issue, so it's it's a fairly severe consideration.
And the issuances are in what kind, you know, how are those broken down? Are they, it's not issued by project, it's obvious, obviously issued by quantity, whatever the investor ultimately ends up purchasing, correct?
Right, so what we, what you do when you issue COPs is you um you create an official statement, and that official statement tells the investors what you're building with the with the monies that you're trying to recoup from them. Um, so when we did the uh initial museum, we included the fleet uh replacement building, we included the museum and we included the fire station number twelve. So that was in our original issue, so the event, the investor knows exactly what projects you're building, but they're providing the funding for that.
It does, how were those COPs actually broken, like, how many actual COPs were issued in the series of that, like, was it a single COP or were there multiple based on the risk of the project?
It ki- it 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 kind of depends on the structure that you you want, um, like, some of them are issued on an annual basis where there's uh coupon payments every year, they're usually in what, five thousand dollar increments, I think is still what they do, the the bond issues are in increments of five thousand, so it depends on how you structure it. It's really up to us and to our financial advisor to understand what the market is interested in and what your investors are looking for. You know, they want to fill their portfolio too, and so they want to make sure that they're getting payments that match their needs financially as well.
Thank you.
All right, I've been trying to get somebody to repossess building two and three for as long as I've been, it just hasn't worked out yet for us. So, um, so what we did is, uh, I I kind of presented this in two ways. Um, this one to just kind of show you some buckets and ideas, and then the next one would show you how the implications of that would play out and what it might look like in terms of timing for debt issuance. So some of the the larger things that we've talked about with council, um, that you've brought to us as priorities are downtown streets game, you know, a couple phases of that, um, the public works campus work that we've talked about. Um, I put a bucket of culture related projects, since we've seen a lot of things out there related to Town Hall Art Center or other kind of things, so I just put a bucket there for it. Um, we're still unclear what might happen with the water plant implementation, but we'll know that in the next, you know, few months. Um, so that's a potential bucket, um, state safe streets improvements. Um, one of the things that is also part of this is you have to spend money really quick upfront, a small percentage with the COP, and so we have a lot of safe streets improvements, we've talked about pedestrian sidewalk improvements that we could bundle with other things, so that's a potential category. And then the one other one that, yeah, council discussed with us is some modifications to the front of this building um to change the entrance, to make it a little more even nineteen seventy seven-ish um in the process, I guess is the way I would do it, so that's, and we've been working through some concepts with that with our architect. Um, and we have some really interesting, actually, concepts, so those are the major buckets, and so that's just an example, those are approximate numbers based on, you know, where they might roll out based on experience. So what I did was, I said, okay, over the next four years, we'd be doing work, and so I divided it into planning and assessment, um, that you do ahead of time, then design, so like, let's take the downtown streets game. Right now, the planning and design phase is kicking off right now, which is the the mobility um and concept phase, so that's in the planning and assessment line there. Then you move into the design phase, which is that you'll see downtown streets gate, and then you would see construction over in twenty twenty five. So all of those are in there in in different ways, and so what's, what we're, I'm trying to illustrate with Tiffany is that, so I put COP issuance down there sort of at the end of twenty four, twenty five, if you look at those projects, it's gonna take you that long to get through design, so that you're at a point where you've got construction design or pretty close to it, and that's when it would be a time to pull the trigger on construction. If you, if, like, for example, if we pulled the trigger at the start of twenty twenty four, I don't think we, we wouldn't be able to get it done.
For the COP.
Yeah, for the COP, we just wouldn't be able to get it done in terms of that, so I wanted, I thought this was a better visual way to kind of lay those out so you could see how things fall, so as we work with council through the process of what projects you would like to fund and the priorities of those, we'll continue to modify a schedule like this so you can see how it fits together, which would then tie into a decision about when you would issue a COP and for how much.
Just, I'll just comment, when I I saw the list of of projects, I thought, the, these are great projects, but we don't know really what they're gonna look like yet, there's a a lot of work in in terms of visioning, scoping for public works facilities. Of course, we had Keith talked about where we are with the downtown projects, we have, you know, we should get through that that vision and scoping work, you know, before and even some of the design before we actually put ourselves on that three year timeline.
And the comment that what we've talked about is, I put in there three A available funds, it would allow us to proceed through those planning and design stages with the existing income stream that we have from three A to get us to the position to make those significant capital expenditures. So.
So you could even start some of these construction and implementation projects.
I could wait on those.
Yeah, I mean, we are, I mean, we are doing that, it's just, the the, the challenge is, is that the ones that you see sort of in this list are really big projects. You know, in other words, if we if we took on the downtown streets game, that would take up a hundred percent of your three A money for that single year. Probably, or more. Or more, so depending if we extend it all the way up Bowles or something, or, you know, the rate we're going, so with that, it's more of a, it's more of finding a mechanism to have the funding as opposed to trying to piggy bank it over time um to do those big projects is really the concept, there's a whole, a whole bunch of other projects, you know, that you've all seen that we're taking on with infrastructure, facilities, um, things in the community, all that kind of stuff with three A right now, which are already in the process of of being moved on.
I think we've pretty much
Yep.
handled this slide, um, we think it's best right now to to focus on the work with the council and others in the community to, you know, complete some vision for those big, big projects and then monitor the the uh economy and kind of come back to you in six or nine months, once we do have more to find on those, on those projects and we kind of have a, have a sense for what the next rate environment could be like, and um then we'll have probably a, we'll have clearer confidence about moving forward with some of those projects and getting them, getting them going with these debt tools.
To add, the other part that, you know, we've talked about a little in the background is going through this visioning process gets us to a point where we can start to try and access other funds, whether it be grant funds or transportation grant funds, say, to to help with downtown or water resource funds or other pockets of money so that we can really leverage as much as possible, which we've obviously been trying to do quite a bit over the last few years, so that gives us time to build those partnerships necessary to try and leverage that money to get us more value for every dollar we spend.
Any questions? Next slide just has questions, so.
Were we pretty settled on COPs?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the direction that council gave back, you said January.
Unless you got a stash of money.
Exactly.
He's trying to line up, he thought he was gonna get his COP earlier.
Be an early investor.
I mean, just a reminder too, you know, in twenty 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 two, um, you know, we only appropriated about two and a half million dollars or so out of the three A money, and that was to address some of our grant requirement matches that we had, and so we are well down the path on um those grant matches that we have for County Line and um Broadway, and then we have the Santa Fe Mineral Project, and we have a a a number of other grants that we're working on right now, I think federal grants, we have well over twelve at least that we're working on currently that are really large projects that require a grant match. And so really, part of that is three A, right, it's gonna help fund some of those projects that we're working on currently, at least for that match piece. Um, and as far as interest rates, you know, we talked that they're really high right now and and and, but if you, and they're higher than they were a a year ago, but they're also relatively stable if you look over the last twenty years or so, um, they're not terribly higher today than they were about twenty years ago. You know, it's pretty close to be an average of what it's been over the last year, so overall, relatively, rates are still pretty low if you think of it or look at it that way.
Great.
It's awesome.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
What's up next?
Seven minutes?
What was that, it was not seven minutes, close.
It was questions that threw it over.
Yeah, it was the questions.
Just while they're switching, I'm just gonna run down.
Okay, there, we'll take a probably a break. This final bit, so the last bit is um kind of discussion on charge for next gen uh advisory committee, I know that, you know, they've been in existence for, what is it, five years now, four years, five years, sort of twenty eighteen, right?
Yeah.
Um.
Five.
I don't know, I can't do math right now, so.
One hundred and fifth year.
Um, but, uh, you know, I've had conversations with uh Councilman Barr uh about this, and I'll I'll turn over to the city manager kind of to prime the conversation of two kind of different approaches that we we could think about potentially taking or mash them up in some way.
Thanks, Mayor, I think this, aside, we don't have a PowerPoint for you, it really is council's open discussion. Um, we did think that, you know, NGAC is different from from most of our other authorities, boards and commissions because uh it doesn't speak to or address a particular discipline of what the city does, it's general and um, you know, in in theory, their charge could be very broad and in general. Uh, but we also, we we thought, given that, it might be worth a little time for council to to um have some conversation and give a kind of a a work, you know, charter or uh project assignment for this year, kind of a goal for the for NJC. So for this conversation, just to start some ideas, you you see a couple, you know, I think we have, we have three different approaches that we thought council might want to want to think about, just to start. That we thought council might wanna, wanna to think about, just to start your conversation. I mean, I think one would be to, um, you know, look at, um, a high priority. That is aligned with council, well. Yeah, this, this one would, would be giving them a specific project that reflects one of council's higher priorities. And is in line with work that the city is, is already doing. Just a few examples that we, we thought there, that also can lend itself to the younger, uh, adult perspective. One is, you know, in, in line with our open space and master plan. You know, they might weigh in on recreational open space features and operational service levels. That should be incorporated into the upcoming plan. Uh, another one could be, um, in line with the economic development strategic plan. Where that group could research and recommend specific restaurants, entertainment options. That would, would fit well wi- within that, that emerging, uh, economic development strategy. Um, keep Littleton vibrant and help us to, to keep that focus. And then another one in, under that category that we thought of would be, um, you know, helping us with our now. Uh, kind of pending conversations about the candlelight walk and the holidays without our street trees on Main Street. You know, that, that group could help us with some of the research for other ways that o- other cities have, have, um, you know. Decked the halls with their downtowns for, uh, those kinds of events and the holiday season. So those are just three. There are probably dozens more that council might be thinking of that matches up with, with your priorities. And can lend itself to the, uh, NGAC perspective. Another way the council could approach this charge to that committee. Um, is to, you know, more simply give the, uh, NGAC group, um, some background. On, on council's priorities, you know, coming out of the, coming out of the retreat. And we would share all of city, all the city's work plans. And the committee could have some conversation to develop kind of project proposals. Probably within the first couple of months that they're, that they're seated. And they could come back and have some conversation with council about their recommendations. And then, then council give, could give some direction there. Um, finally, an idea that I also, I think heard, and I did have a couple of conversations with. Um, those of you who've been most involved with this committee. Um, but we could, uh, charge that group with, uh, developing and helping to implement some, some strategies. To help build awareness of the role of the city. Uh, potentially help build some mechanisms from the younger adult perspective. Um, that might help to bridge some of the, the, the community factions that we have. Um, and or kind of pick up a ball that I heard was started a couple of years ago with potentially, you know, with Arapahoe Community College. To help develop a local government academy program that has kind of faltered in concept over, over the last couple of years. But that's a partnership that I think could really build some, some civic capacity and build some more interest among that, that generation. Um, just awareness and, and interest in local government. Um, I think that was our last idea and so we wanted to start your conversation with those. And then take any direction that you might have as we gear up for the orientation, the first meetings, first meeting with, with that group in a couple of weeks.
Do you wanna start?
Yeah, I'm happy to start. Um, so Lucy also forwarded on some feedback from the committee as well. And, uh, which I thought was valuable and actually speaks to a lot of the changes I hope we can make in the coming year. Um, one thing that stood out to me, well, two things from these three, these three numbered items. Um, I think one and three are probably the way to go. Two is kind of what we tried this last year and it did produce stuff, but I don't know if it produced it. In a way in terms of timing or clarity that we wanted it to, in terms of having the committee essentially choosing. Exactly how to focus and what to focus on and in what order. But I think that having options one and three, having very specific projects with, that are. Again, specifically oriented to goals that we already have on deck to support staff, um, doing that work, I think is good. So getting more specific and in addition to that, have kind of an, a, uh, uh, ongoing project. That kind of transcends all NGAC committees, something that kind of keeps the core of the group together. Would be something like this local government academy, academy or just essentially continued youth outreach. And I think it wouldn't just be like teaching classes or anything at ACC, but it would be more like reaching out through, uh, youth program in ACC. But also the high schools, the new epic campus as well. Um, and essentially looking for opportunities to get young people in the city more civically engaged. And that can be through a variety of things. There is no grand vision for that yet. Uh, this was an idea that was, that was proposed. I thought it was good because in the sense that. There is some continuity between all the work that goes on, that the, one NGAC to another can kind of continue on. With this outreach, this youth engagement and outreach strategy. Um, and as well, they can own three to four projects per year, running on two to three month cycles. But, go ahead.
Has the group reached out to any other, uh, next gen groups out there around the country? I, I think this originally came to us from Aspen, is that where it was or someplace?
There was, so the Aspen one was actually, I think the Aspen one was high schoolers.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of the, the next gen groups are actually like youth groups. I know West, Westminster or Broomfield has one as well, but yeah, the, the recommendation was like, look what Aspen's doing. Which Aspen is since no longer existing in that, that committee, so.
Right. No, I think, I love it. I think, I think you guys are on the right track. I, I liked the idea of, you know, giving them some, some things to think about rather than them trying to figure out what council really wants. I think we, we owed it to them to give them some protection.
Yeah, and what you were saying and kind of a hybrid of what you're saying, I think we need to say this, we wanna hear from you on ABC. But also, you know, when you mentioned almost last week or two weeks ago, like, we also want you to tell us what we're not even thinking about at some. So we don't wanna say we're restricted to just B or C, but hey, if there's, you know, X, Y, Z that you think we should hear about.
Like parking is a good example, right? I mean, do we start putting parking meters? Do we park, uh, differently than the way we park right now diagonally? Do we, you know, what have other cities done? You know, you look at Fort Collins in their old town and they have everybody parking in the middle of the, uh, college avenue. So there, there's things like that that, uh, I think could be brought up and, and that we could share that, that group then could share to. You know, whoever's looking at, you know, the, uh, DDA for example.
And I think the downtown, you know, kind of re-envisioning project, like, seemed to gain traction amongst the group. And I think it would be, a- and to use that as an example, to get more specific about what we are asking and to your point saying like. We are looking at mobility and transportation. How do you access downtown? How would you like to access downtown? You know, eh, where, if you drive, where would you park, where, how, where and how would you like to park? And how far is too far of a walk? Or if you're biking, like what bike infrastructure do we need to support you biking more to downtown?
I mean, I, I think those are great ideas. One concern I would have is if they, if the DDA would seem like their, their toes are being stepped on by next gen. Or the Transportation Mobility Board, toes are being stepped on. If we could have them have a joint meeting or something, say, hey, invite the next gen into DDA and Transportation Mobility Board. And have that two-way conversation, that might be the way to go about it.
And I think they would be very open and welcoming of that. I mean, I hope that we can have some more of that cross pollination. I think it's just from a logistics standpoint that we didn't do that quite as often as last year.
I just, uh, the thing I could see them, if they're discussing downtown in a silo and DDA just goes in downtown and they come at different angles, then it's like, wait a second, hey.
I think they might though, right?
They might, but.
That's the whole premise of this, right? Is they have a younger, fresher, different perspective about maybe how things should develop. You know, we might be looking at it, how it was done, you know, a thousand years ago. Maybe they're like, well, no, we don't text anymore. We use that Slack or whatever you were calling or whatever that was. Like, I didn't even know half the, most of those were, most of those titles, but coming at it from a different perspective, so maybe.
Right, but then maybe having conversations with those groups, not completely separately.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think to further that, I would also suggest, I'm always thinking of how does this align with work that's already in, already in the works? So we can kind of leverage our existing staff efforts. Uh, when it comes to the downtown, I think that there's a lot of good, good material there. Um, but I would like to suggest that if that's the direction, we could work with that downtown project that's already in the works. Lots of facilitation happening with different groups. I think that instead of having an independent project, we might task them with being, you know, of a focus group. Um, that could be folded into that broader facilitation that's already gonna be, going to be happening from a, a timing standpoint. And a kind of, we could give them some, some context and all of that sort of thing, as opposed to kind of a separate charge.
Couple of things come to mind. Um, one is, I think whatever we have to do, that the results help make a decision. It's not just nice to know.
Right.
And then that comes into the timing issue that you were mentioning. Don't have them report on something that's al- that it's already got in another direction, so I think that's important. Um, so they, so their work, so their work is being used. Another thing is, my sense is, and you correct me, that they really would like to bite into something. Not flesh. Um, I, I think the restaurant idea, I mean, although a good idea. And the, um, the holiday decoration, although valuable, I, I think they would want something a little more meaty. And the ones I see in here, and then open space gets, talk about stepping on toast, salsa bourbon, that kind of thing. Um, I'd like to see them look into safety. Um, also, I, I like, one of the ones I was, um, the bridging the community factions. And maybe an independent look of how to find some common ground in our community in some areas where, um, we're very polarized. Um, that would be tough, be really tough, but maybe they could come up with some ideas. So those are the ones that I would advocate. I'm sure there's some other ones we may come up with. And it probably should attach to the five focus areas we're working on. That makes the most sense.
I think we're looking at the staff communication and then the list from next gen. The three that I saw that kind of coalesced into one would, was the, um, track young professionals to live in Littleton, uh, business attraction. And then actually the restaurant entertainment, I can see that as more of an economic development, um, realm. All folded into one there, kind of a charge of, you know, not just focused specifically on downtown, but the broader, um, community with that, what would make it.
And I think. We would just need to craft it like a well, a good, a, 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 a well-thought-out scope. To say, what about kind of business development or, you know, entertainment options? Are we looking for them to provide us information on? And I think that would be totally fine if we hit on some of the major areas, public safety, economic development, public works. Um, and spread those categories kind of broadly. Um, I would also say too, it's probably worth putting out five or six ideas out there and letting them choose three. And to your point, or sorry, to your point on, on, on the timing of things. Um, yes, that is top of mind because I think there was, there were priorities that they wanted to tackle this last round. That I think did not entirely align with the timing of the decisions that we were making. So I think that's just, again, that's gonna be a bit more of the, we need you to tackle this item first, that item second. Rather than letting them necessarily choose the order of it.
Maybe once a month?
Once a month.
For an hour?
Two hours?
But they also have some committee meetings, don't they? Do they have some side meetings?
They had.
Not, not necessarily regularly scheduled. I think this was something that kind of got brought up in the survey too around communication is that. That's what they would like is kind of more opportunities for outside that one room engaging. Hence them suggesting different communication tools, which I know is problematic from a FOIA and information accessibility issue. However, we can work on ideas of like coming up with regularly scheduled and announced and publicly noted. Uh, outside that room meetings as well.
I was gonna ask Reed about that with, what's, I mean, since it's not a legislative body, not a quasi judicial body. I mean, yes, it's a public city, but is there, what are the, you know, laws with them? Um, could they, you know, get together and have discussions outside of that meeting? Um, could they have a group chat? Since it's, I mean, they're not announcing anything, how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, simply because they're more of an advisory board doesn't mean that they're not subject to the open meetings law. So even when, and that was one of the challenges where they just wanted to get, you know, three of them together, four of them, kind of these subcommittees. Um, to work on various issues, that's where we came into issues with noticing things. I mean, they're still talking about city business, even if they don't actually make a decision, an ultimate decision on it. So advisory boards are still subject to open meetings law.
So could we, this is me thinking on the spot, could we just get rid of next gen, have them meet? They can do their own thing and have scheduled public appearances quarterly to city council as, as a citizen group. And they could do, discuss what they wanted, I mean, just, you know, if it's, then that also makes it a little more nebulous.
Take that, the promal, the odd of.
I know. I didn't say it was recommended, I'm just saying that, you know.
We could dissolve them once a month to a lot.
But then we can't recruit and it's not formal and there's not expectations. I, I see.
I didn't say, I didn't say it was a good idea.
I, I just think it out of the box, I get that, cause it is frustrating, cause they can't meet, but they can meet and choose.
Correct, I think, I, I think we are asking this group to cut, do collaborative, creative things.
It's hard and.
It's, it is difficult to do that in a two-hour meeting where you're smashed together on a weekday night. However, there might be the opportunity, I think, to essentially publicly note and regularly schedule. And a, a meeting outside of that, like maybe essentially twice a month to leave the option open for folks to get together. To come together on a weekend or something like that to work on a particular project or go do a particular event. The, to lend some predictability to it, we could have that be regularly scheduled on a monthly basis. Again, it just, it runs into those same challenges and I just don't know how to get around it.
It wouldn't have to be regularly scheduled, I mean, if there's something, if they're gonna go do a, an event or, or wanted to hang out on a weekend for some reason, they could. Put it on the calendar, notice the meeting, it's.
Could they, could we move to twice a month and one be more of a study session or working session? And if they don't, if they're, don't need it, they cancel it and it comes off the calendar.
The only issue would be the staff commitment, but does staff need to be there?
I think, I would like to just float this concept because it's important. I know it's not about the charge necessarily. But, um, as we said, this, this committee is different and, you know, it's, with planning commission, we have planners. Who have expertise there and they're assigned, you know, HBB similarly, uh, TDMB. This one, we're looking for, you know, it's, it's, it's a generalist, probably someone who's gonna be able to, to, uh, help kind of facilitate a little bit. The role that, that I'd like to, uh, advocate for is kind of limited from a frequency standpoint. I think we'd like to, um, help with setting meetings, getting agendas. Um, but I like the i- idea and I, I think staff would appreciate the more kind of self-sufficiency that that group can have, the better. Um, our role would be helping to make sure that they have the kind of city structure facilitation that they need. Um, but, you know, just looking at the individuals on this, this committee, they are pretty well, they're pretty comfortable in kind of, you know, con- conducting their own meetings. So, you know, I, I think to the extent that, the charge to, to this group, um, can be less technical and deep. And requ- you know, and that the role for staff can be more in kind of keeping them going from a meeting. And pu- public notice and agenda standpoint. Um, that's where we like to see staff kind of work the best. Um, and if it's comfortable that, you know, the group can meet more frequently, we can help get them noticed. But we won't necessarily be, be present and facilitating actively for every meeting.
Would, would you offer the city facility, uh, city building for them to meet or you would suggest that they meet someplace else?
Either or?
I think that's a great.
We've got a lot of traffic, uh, with meetings though coming, coming up. I, I know most nights of the week have board.
Right.
Commissions.
So then what you're saying is that they still have their once a month meeting, but then additional meetings, the responsibility of staff would only be to.
Help with the noticing.
But not to facilitate it or.
Right, or take notes, I mean, I, I think the more self reliant that these groups can be.
Makes sense.
With notes, the better.
I mean, yeah, notes need to have, you know, if, even if it's a simple agenda, this is the topic they're gonna discuss.
One thing with regards to location and kind of facilitation of the actual, uh the administrative part of it. What, it was brought up around uh virtual meetings only, or, or virtual meetings only being an option. Yeah, not necessarily in its entirety, but using a virtual meeting platform in lieu of physically meeting. And I know this is part of the discussion that got brought up around all of our ABCs and hybrid participation, so. Do you know where that stands in conversation?
We still have, the management fellow in the city manager's office is really working closely with SAMA to advance the goal of. Surfacing for council, how all of these, how all of our authorities, boards and commissions work and highlighting where we might find more consistency. What some of the opportunities are, I think uh remote or, you know, meetings is one kind of option that we should consider. But just as you were kind of, kind of alluding to council member, that would be kind of an open door for. You know, I think there might be other boards and commissions who are interested in that, at least more flexibility. I might, you know, suggest that we at least start the year with the, with the expectation for the more standard. In-person meetings, but you know, it, over the next couple of months as we bring some of that back to council. Um there might be a change across the board that would give more flexibility, and that's up to council, but we have to think through all the. Associated logistics and everything with that.
And there's an increased staff involvement, even though it's virtual, it's.
Yeah, the, it comes with its pros and cons, I just wanted to throw it out there, cause it was noted in their feedback and I thought that, you know, amongst. Amongst all the digital virtual options to facilitate better communication and getting work done, that's probably the most likely because it was something that was already on deck for us. In it, in our entirety. Um but, you know, like you said, we'll let it play out throughout the entire city and see what, uh, see what folks come up with in a few months.
So back to the direction to give them, I, we, I mean, I heard specifically downtown. Uh more the business development attraction type was one, and then. Did you, did you say safety as well, or?
I, I was at safety.
What, what, what would the, what would the safety aspect be?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what they, what would they.
Well. Remember, uh back to our survey, a resident survey, that there was a lot of people that were not feeling safe. Um Gretchen talked about some of the issues downtown and. At NLC in the spring, in the fall, they talked about being more proactive with respect to safety and not reactive. Um so what are some of the best practices out there that we might look at within the confines that these are not police?
Right, professionals, and I would suggest, uh council member, we do have the study session that's planned for. Uh probably e- early May around safety where you, council will be hearing from the police chief, lots of kind of data and. Kind of analysis on what's happening, the tr- what practices, you know, we're looking into that we haven't been able to advance. Um I would, I'm not sure that uh best practices for safety is the. The best focus area, I'll, I'll say for this group.
Well, if we're gonna, if we're already working on that, yeah, I agree too.
What about environmental stewardship, because I know that they were very, very, you know.
Good that we have an environmental stewardship committee now.
Well, we have that, but I'm sure that they still have some pretty good ideas, you know, that they'd.
Yes, and I think this, I mean, because you're, you're correct, like this was kind of the, uh maybe to help foster off into what is now the ESC, but. Um I think we also need to kind of see what the ESC decides to define as their kind of purview and, and the extent of it.
I haven't heard the acronym yet, but that, that is the ESC. It's now a real committee.
That's what it is now. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think when that committee kind of gets off the ground and really defines its work plan. We'll know if there are like gaps in there that the NGAC, I think for now, I'll prob- I would suggest maybe steering away from it and letting the ESC kind of forge their own path.
We'll be forwarding the last year's NGAC's recommendations to the ESC as it gets started, as, as part of, of their context work.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the other thing that, you know, was the recruitment of NG, how to get more people involved, I think that, that could tie in with that number three with the.
I like that number three.
Government Academy, but that, I think that's ACC's maybe, you know, if they, ACC wants them to be involved, I think they need to have that conversation right there, but have this. General um community involvement and local government, have them, you know, put that in a broader umbrella.
Yeah, I think that's kind of, as an ongoing project, I, I would feel really good about having them work on that. Um and it not being so specific and defined, but to let them be creative as to how they would see our city engaging with youth in general, whether it be. Resident surveys, which was something I really feel deeply about and, you know, or it could be on public works projects, whatever it may be. Essentially, they would essentially create a plan over the course of this year, say, you know, we are gonna be going out and doing what's up?
Recommendation.
Uh yeah, a, a, a recommendation to essentially establish some sort of youth engagement strategy very broadly around the city. ACC inclusive of that, so I, I would like to see that happen, I think that's what worth doing.
Remember Littleton Leadership Academy?
That's what this is.
It's kind of like this then, yeah, so it's more specific to local government in Littleton.
Well, no, you're talking different, the, so Arapua Community College um is, had been talking about kind of rebuilding the leadership academy.
Aren't like our old Littleton Leadership Academy?
Kind of, yeah, so, yeah.
It's probably a little bit of that, but again, this being more focused on.
I think that's, uh being super helpful.
That's what number three basic adds is that.
Yeah, I like number three.
We get more focused on youth, but like that is, yeah, what the leadership.
So it's not.
Higher bro- more broad.
So is it actually where they go through some sort of step by step process or just sort of an awareness of how you can get, or it, it should be defined?
I, I feel like it's to be defined at this point, I mean, again, it's one of those projects that might lend itself more true to the creativity of the group. And how they want to engage and how they see it.
It could be as specific as we're working with ACC on this one program, or we're doing something differently.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
And the touch, the, the tie in with the local government academy or this leadership program. Could really be just an approach that staff can help with to have a conversation with them about. Whether and how that could, it's, they would like to reengage on that, I don't know.
Yeah.
Instead of directing ACC, which we can't.
Right, 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 right. I think in terms of the actual specificity of the projects, I, I wasn't sure if you wanted to do that tonight, tonight, but I figured we could all submit ideas to. Your office and say, a- and then maybe you could kind of.
I'm, I'm hearing three.
Yeah, I hear three.
And uh if those three make sense, what I'd, I'd like to do is, is work with the, the CMO staff. To pull, to, to just put a little finer point on that, kind of what that charge could look like, I would, you know, circulate that back out to council. Um and if you see any, any red flags or have, have other comments, we would take comments on, on that.
So what were the three?
My notes say, um attracting young professionals to Littleton, how to, you know, uh recommendations. Business attraction as a specific focus of downtown input and probably with the, the downtown. Um planning project that's, that's, that's in the works. And then um finally, in, engagement regarding local government, youth engagement about. Around civic and lo- local government affairs.
I would say, eh, the first two were kind of more of those discreet projects for this NGAC and that third one being something that is a bit more long form.
Okay.
I would say if we came to them with one or two more specific projects, I think some I had in mind might be East Community Center. Um I know they're accepting board applications right now for turning that into a community center in the coming year, but I think that's. That hits a lot of buttons, I think, on what this committee might be caring about.
That's a great idea, actually.
Can you help shape that a little, little bit, what would the uh request or the ask be from the committee?
Um essentially to have LPS's new, newly forming board come in. And work with the committee to come up with a specific tract of programming on one of their priority areas. Again, the community centers formation is still in such its nascent stages. That I don't know quite where that board of advisors is really gonna go. I think it's worth keeping on our radar and it's probably a good area of input that I feel like they could be fruitful in. The other might be the um, uh sports or the um, the stadium sale proceeds.
Those are kind of almost one of the same.
They could be, or.
We currently have a study session planned for um first part of May, or, or, you know, around that. And I, I will tell you that, uh.
It's coming up quick.
Yeah, and there is gonna be the overlap.
Okay, then the time, timing works with.
The timing may not work then with the, yeah, those conversations east of. Is there a third project, a third discrete?
I was gonna say, if we, we have those, kind of those three, if we can add, if there's a, a fourth one that they wanna propose and just at least bounce it off us and say, hey, does this fit with council? And we can say, yeah, sure, you can tell us more, or, you know, try to think of something different, because give them some kind of ownership of. Of, of something else that, you know, there maybe is something that's not on this list or that.
Definitely.
Then pick.
Can I see one more, just a clarification point, when we get back to the uh youth engagement or the local government content, concept. Do you like the finding common ground mechanisms for bridging gaps for that group? You want, you want uh recommendations on that from that perspective?
I would like it.
I think it's, I mean, if we make this broad enough to say, you know, come talk about your perspective on civic engagement, doesn't have to be defined just to youth, it doesn't have to be defined just to this. Academy, doesn't have to be defined just to in, um getting membership at NGAC. Um it could be just broader civic engagement of some i- some ideas uh of involving around that, could involve that, I mean, they could say. You know, we're not gonna solve that issue.
No, no, we, it's nothing but some fresh ideas and some, I don't know, approaches, I mean, we're not the only community that has. Factions, other communities do too.
Yeah, okay, we'll put that into the.
Thank you, yeah, and make that part of number three.
So.
Anything else?
I'm hearing. Uh ask them for a project based on what they think and how, you know, that they've heard, what about the uh East Community Center?
Timing's probably not gonna line us with.
That's what I think too.
What we need.
I mean, I think we can let them know as individuals to go and get involved with that, but as a committee to provide feedback to council, I don't know.
I think that's an interesting angle on the civic engagement. Local government kind of, you know, so much of what we do is not a, you know. I will get out of the soapbox here, but you know, local government used to be about delivery services, here's what, here's what the city does. Now it, it really is about networks of, you know, government and nonprofit, you know, working together, finding those common goals and I think. You know, that's a really nice um example of that and it's, it's ripe for probably exploring on how. The city could best, e- even once there's a, there's a course selected there, how the city can best engage and how young folks and. You know, and, and everyone can be part of that project.
And honestly, at this stage in that community centers development, it's so, it may be just so chaotic that it's not worth putting too many bodies at it, but like. Give it a year to bake of it and we can reengage for sure.
Yeah.
For future.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe next year, that might make sense.
Yeah, next year could easily be a good.
Good list.
Good idea.
Any other questions or comments on that?
And then the only other thing, and we've kind of talked around it, is one of these needs to be, to help with their recruitment.
That's what, that, that last community engagement, I think that could be part of that, that could fall underneath there.
Okay, so that would be the last one, yeah.
So, we would have three discrete projects, two of which we've identified, a third to come, and that fourth one essentially is. You think that broader, long-term engagement.
Yeah.
As an ongoing function.
As an ongoing function.
All right, good, any, yeah, you, you feel like you have a question?
Mm-hmm.
Good, all right. Any update, report?
I do have an update, um.
We got deputy city manager.
We do have a deputy city manager, and that's what I want to tell you about. I probably saw your email, but I wanna announce publicly because we've now told the organization that, yes, we have, we have a new city, uh deputy city manager. That will be joining us on April seventeenth, he's gonna get here very quickly. Um Mike Gent is the, is the successful candidate. We had four finalists, I will go through the, the litany, kind of how many we started with and how we got there, but we had four excellent. Um finalists and uh Mike Gent emerged as a candidate with kind of uh strong support from our leadership team. Uh clicked well with the city manager's office and, and me. Um Mike is currently the deputy city manager of Surprise, Arizona. Uh which is a really nice, actually larger city, um but he has experienced the deputy city manager role. Um been there for about ten years. Um in his time there, he has, you know, worked with and led uh numerous departments across the city, so one of the things we're looking for was. Some depth of uh organizational management, organizational assessment to kind of help us carry through with some of the, the, you know, initiatives that we have and. Um and needs that we know that we have here. Mike has a kind of, a, a unique educational and broader career background. Um he has a, he has a doctorate in social work. Um and a master's of, of public administration, which is kind of the, is the standard for folks in our, our gig. Um and a, a bachelor of arts in, in psychology from uh Western Washington, which is where he's from, so I think that. That mix of uh background is, uh kind of covers, hits a, a lot of the bases for the, the work that, uh that we do. He also brings some private sector experience, which I, I think is, is really nice and business, business thinking, and he also served for a number of years in the U- United States Marine Corps. Um so I'm, we're eager to work with him, he, he brought some great energy in the, the interviews. Um and he's gonna, I think, you know, hit the ground running with us, just to reiterate uh the, the initial focus areas. Um he will be directly supporting our community development director or development department, economic development, the museum, the library and. And uh in- information technology, so kind of a, a range of, of departments all with, um, you know. With exciting kind of in- initiatives and challenges ahead. Um he'll also be kind of the point person for our office on this major ERP project that we have, and he'll also lead other. Um citywide projects, so I think he'll round out the, the city manager's office and the, the areas of, of focus that we all have. And um I'm eager for you all to, to meet him, he'll be here in a few weeks, so thanks again for your, your support for that position, I think he'll help us out.
And.
Jim, where do we stand on uh Geneva Village, I was just looking at the tentative calendar. I will tell you, share that with you and then cross an item off my to-do list as an update for council. Um Kathleen and Keith and I met last week with the um. With residents and it was really nice, it was in their, their, uh, their community room as they call it and. Uh we had, I'm, I would, I think eleven, uh, I don't know if Kathleen can, can correct me on the, the number, but. Uh eleven or so residents joined us and um we reviewed information that had been shared with council just about kind of the. The, the rehab needs that we need and I think some of the bigger picture. Um city council and, you know, city uh, uh interests and responsibilities for thinking about what happens with that. That their property and the option, you know, uh potentially for doing, doing something different with that, that, that property. I think we um, we stressed, you know, that this is a, a long-term. Decision that the, that the council needs to make and it's not focused on any, on any, any current residents. Um I also took the, the liberty, not included as a body, but with, um, you know, really emphasizing that the reason that we have. We're, we're in the steps, the. That the reason that we have, we're we're in the steps that we are with this project is that the city council really wants to do. Everything we can to make sure that um people have have good housing. Um, re- uh regardless of of which direction we go. So, we also invited um our social work housing expert. Um, to come with us and just be introduced to that group, and so she was, and um she started. She just gave an overview of the kind of interview process um that. Uh, that she would be using and we were, you know, we we heard some some questions about what if we're not comfortable. Sharing our, you know, our personal information and we, we stress that the city staff will only be seeing aggregate. Information about kind of the, about demographics for who's there, and it's important to the council that we know that. But the, one of the reasons we have this third party is we're not interested in seeing anybody's personal information. Um, so that, um, you know, there was, it was good, I think, that we we were able to. Uh, to introduce Brittany. Um, since then, we have, you know, kind of finalized that process and that. That contract. Um, and so I know she was wanting to reconnect with with residents. And really build the, build the relationship. One thing that she um. She, feedback that she gave us, you know, I will say staff kind of wanted staff. Residents kind of were eager to talk with her without city staff there, which is okay. Um, so I I know some some conversation happened after the meeting about that the project and then her, her work. Um, and she gave us some feedback that for this to be most effective, it's gonna take a little while for people to get comfortable with the process. So she's trying to build that that relationship and schedule interviews, but it might not be as fast as we hoped. So it might take a couple of months. Um, I think that's okay, given the other steps that we have. I know I did have an email out about the. The HPB process that we're we're planning for the HPB's April meeting. Um, we know that that might take, you know, one meeting for some background and kind of some context. They might need a second meeting and um so that that could take place April, May. Um, possible that, you know, if there's, we've asked them kind of as the outcome there for a letter. Um, on behalf of the HP, HPB that could presented by, could be presented by the chair to the council. Um, and so we wanna make sure that they have have time for that. So um, it's moving. We wanna make sure that it's that we are thorough with this this process and be able to kind of uh. And then we also, one more step, I know the the council had said, in in addition to the resident meeting, it would be good to have a public meeting where. Every, you know, eh uh, anyone who's interested in Geneva Village could come share their thoughts kind of outside of the. The city council meeting model, so where we can just share information, hear from people, answer questions. So we're, we still need to, need to schedule that meeting and we're trying to just kind of keep this all moving together. It's probably a longer update than you were wanting, but um.
Why you just said the issue on the, on the calendar?
They they met, they talked, that was it, so.
Eleven, eleven residents in attendance?
Mm-hmm.
Of fourteen?
Of um sixteen residents, fourteen units.
Sixteen residents, fourteen units, eleven showed up, okay.
Right.
So, not bad for a first.
Could we pencil something in the tentative calendar so we can kind of continue moving this issue?
Also, I thought we were gonna wait for the, we're gonna wait for the.
Right, but we have this calendar all the way out to November.
We could, we could tentatively set it out. Um, at this point, I I think that.
I don't want this to stretch out for six months, right? You said they need a longer time to talk to fourteen people, you know. You know, two months to talk to fourteen people? I don't know. I, you know, I understand building a relationship, but I don't want it. To just continue to drag.
Right, I I think we're there. Um, it's just, yeah, I I think tentatively it would be June. That's the, that's the timeframe that we're, we're gonna be coming back. That's all we have.
City attorney isn't deep a thought, I mean.
I just don't know how to follow up that uh, that update regarding uh.
Succinctly?
The deputy city manager and all those changes in the city manager's office. Yeah, I mean, eh, I'm excited to have uh Jim get some assistance up there. Obviously, I complain about how I've been short-staffed for many moons.
No more complaints, right?
The same goes for for Jim, although he he has added a couple of assistant city managers and a deputy city manager and two fellows. I have, I have my own good news, which I've informed you all about before, but uh Tassi Titlow will be starting on Thursday.
Thanks.
So, two days, um, she's gonna be assisting uh wherever, wherever we can pawn off work to her. But I anticipate she'll be doing a lot of our public works engineering stuff, especially with three A coming through at some point. Um, also be assisting our community development department in terms of kind of the land use type issues. As you've seen tonight, we have uh no shortage of projects um to get to, and.
Is she, is she an attorney or?
Oh, an attorney?
She has represented herself as an attorney, so.
She is a, currently she's a senior assistant city attorney. She is an attorney, yes.
I didn't know if it was.
I didn't go through her CV, um, but.
Does that mean you can take a vacation?
Uh, not yet.
Seems like her.
Anything else?
No, thank you, mayor.
I just wanted to, I think council's aware that uh SB twenty-three, two thirteen was uh introduced last Wednesday. Um, there are a variety of local officials that met with our Arapahoe County representatives last Friday, started a discussion with them. And also there's HB twenty-three, twelve fifty-five, um, which would relate to it, not specifically, but the the. Preempting uh growth restrictions as well, so maybe not as big of news as two thirteen, but.
Not for us, but it's.
Not for us, but for some people, but, I mean, it theoretically could.
That's how it is, rhyme with.
On the note, the telephone town hall is uh Thursday at six thirty. Um.
Is is this, is this still mine?
You said, you said you were done.
Your time's been running.
I have only, I have four or five minutes to talk about the.
So, yeah, so for council, uh, the the public town hall through Arapahoe County is on the thirtieth at six, six thirty?
I thought it was six thirty, um, yes.
Well, if you're, if you're there at six.
We'll make sure that's on the website again, and we'll, you know, if, I mean, council members would love to have you on. I know the mayor will be our kind of designated speaker. Um. Yeah, so it's, it's really the the first engagement. We're, we're trying to just build some awareness with uh the public about what's. Uh, this bill could do, so.
Great, alright.
Alright.